You know I don't know how to turn this thing on.
I had to go tell a girl about I have shorties at their water meter, which is on my side.
Thank you.
Not gonna leave you on high ground, but be high.
Oh God, I need someone. Always. I don't think I'm a new one, it's probably me. You don't need it.
And then I'm gonna go back to the spinal cord. Or plane. They're in there like a trash. I was supposed to, they're from the same district.
Trash.
Probably please. But anyway, it's loose.
Hammond City Council, public hearing agenda, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, five thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
Public hearing, none. The Wilbur Daniel Field Award of Excellence Ceremony will be immediately following our regular session agenda. Hammond City Council, regular session agenda, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, five thirty one, P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez. Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
Present.
To just stand for our prayer. Eternal Father, we thank you on this evening, we give you glory and honor that is due your name. Thank you, Father God, just for one more day. We thank you for your darling son who paid the ultimate price on the cross that we too would have access to the tree of life. Father God, we thank you for this day that everything will be done decent, order pleasingly in your sight. Therefore, you would get all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. Father God, I actually continue to bless this council, continue to bless the districts in which they serve. But most of the head of father, continue to bless their families. We actually continue to bless our mayor, his administration. Every city employing you right now, Father God, continue to guide them, continue to keep them from all hurt, harm, and danger. Father, if there's ever time we need you, we need you right now. So we just thank you for all the things that you've done for us exceedingly abundantly above all that we could ever ask, think, or pray. And for that, we give you all glory, all honor, all praise, because it all belongs to you. In your darling son, Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
At this time for our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I get an approval of our minutes from our February seventh, twenty twenty four meeting, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Abstain.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to accept the dedication of the sewer lift station property and improvements at the waters at Hammond. Attorney Andre Cudrin.
This is the council, this development is off Barley Road in Hammond and the sewer lift station improvements have been completed, have been inspected and passed inspection. And now the developer wants to dedicate and donate to the city that lift station, the improvements, it includes generator, it includes other component parts. It includes all manufacturer's warranty that come with all of those parts. So we're asking this item be introduced, set for a public hearing at the next meeting, and then discuss any questions or comments anyone may have.
Any questions, the comments from anyone from the public? Any questions, the comments from anyone from the council? If not.
Yes, I do, I do, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Andre, this is in District Three, right?
Uh, I don't know, councilman.
Yeah, this over here by Home Depot.
Yes.
Yeah, well, look, I would like to get, uh, I would like to get all the work that's been done on this lift station. Because this is what I've been looking at, they've been having generators over there, so they've been having problem with this generator. I mean, with the lift station. So I'd like to get all the work that development have done on it and the work that the city have done on it before we accept this here. Okay.
Have that available for you at the, at the meeting.
Okay, so could I get it?
Advance, if it gets, if I get it in advance.
Yes.
We'll share that with you.
Please, could I get it a week before the next meeting?
I'll, I'll make that request, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Pledge of the council.
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Introduction number two.
Introduction of an ordinance to abandon the donor, the well lot, and oxidation pond in Whitmore Acres and the sewer processing plant on North Oak Street donated to the city of Hammond as no longer needed for a public purpose. In accordance with the terms of the donation, Attorney Cudrin.
Ms. Chairman, members of the council, I'm asking this matter be tabled, there's some further investigation with D E Q and EPA on actually the condition, whether it actually is an oxidation pond, it was called that in the donation, we don't know what the status of that is. There's also some question about what may have already gone back to the city. So I would ask that this matter be tabled so we can do some further investigation and get you full information on it.
Any other questions from any, from, from the council on this particular item being tabled?
Andre, would you just mind explaining, there's some people here in the audience and I think they, you know, just want to know what this is.
So back in the early days when I was still in law school, there was an act of donation to the city of Hammond from the developer of those subdivisions out there. It's actually Woodbridge, Whitmore, Beechwood was at some part involved with. And there was a donation of the water system, sewerage system in Whitmore, including the immovable property and improvements. It included lines, Woodbridge Sewer Processing Plant, and other properties. And that was donated to the city in nineteen eighty-two. That donation had a condition which said that if this property is no longer needed for a public purpose, it reverts back automatically to the donor, back to the person who gave the property to the city, at no cost to the donor. So it was identified as property that was no longer used, I'm told, Guy Palermo tells me he's been working for the city a long time, he's never worked on that, it's not been used. There's other facilities servicing those subdivisions. So this is really just a process where the city is divesting itself of ownership and liability of properties that it doesn't need anymore. And under the terms of the donation, if we're not using it anymore for a public purpose, it goes back to the donor. There's some questions raised about the actual condition of, of what was called, it was called an oxidation pond only because that was the term used in the donation, what that really is. And so some investigation needs to be done about what jurisdictional requirements may be from D E Q or EPA or other government agencies to determine what responsibility the city may have to do work before it's just abandoned. So there's still some work to be done on this before we can clean that up. There's also a well lot, if you look at the plat of, of Whitmore, there's a, there's a well lot on there that would also be abandoned because that's no longer used. So that's, that's sort of the background on it.
So just to be clear, these items currently have absolutely no use to the, to Whitmore, Woodbridge area and have not for some time.
Correct.
Anyone else have any other questions on this item? All right, could I get a motion to table this item?
So move. Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Abstain.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction number three.
Introduction of an ordinance of the city of Hammond City Council amending the official zoning map for R S dash three to M X dash C at five one six Magazine Street, Lacy Landrum.
This is a request that has come through the Planning and Zoning Commission. The gentleman who brought it forward, this is in District One, so it's in Councilman Andrews' district at five sixteen Magazine Street. He wants to install a laundromat at that location. And after the commission heard it and looked at the surrounding land use, you'll see on the second page of your report, the land use shows mixed commercial, also light industrial, and then how this property is also zoned right now, which is residential. And after their review of everything, seeing how this is still consistent with the comprehensive master plan, how it would reinforce the existing or planned character of the neighborhood and be a useful resource for them to have on Magazine Street. There was a motion to approve and seconded, and all of the commissioners were in favor of this. You'll find in your packet the standard applications of the application itself, the survey, photos of that site, and your zoning map at the very, at the very end.
Anyone here in the audience on this particular item? Any questions or concerns from anyone in the council? I make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction number four.
Introduction of an ordinance to amend the city of Hammond Unified Development Code to collect fees equal to the costs assumed by the city to record documents through the tangiful of Parish Clerk of Court and the advertisement and notice of public hearings, public meetings required of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, Lacy Landrum.
That's a whole lot of words to basically say that we are going, we are asking for you all to approve that we pass on the fees that are required at the Clerk of Court to record documents at the end of an ordinance or a survey dedication. And the costs that we incur at our official journal, which is the Daily Star, for publishing the cases, that we just pass on those same fees to the customers. So right now, because we haven't updated fees in many years, and the Clerk of Court meanwhile has increased their recording fees, we are not receiving enough money in those applications to really cover all the costs that the city incurs. So we're just requesting for, to make this a full pass-through to the customer for those fees rather than the city bearing those costs. This was recommended unanimously by the planning commissioners, and we also consulted with the city attorney.
Just like to ask you a question.
Sure.
Look, we had put the money to the side for the software where a person will have to actually go to the building, the permit building. So how are we looking on that software?
So we have gone through several spreadsheets of workflows with the software company. They are currently working on tying in our G I S, which is our mapping software that shows where all the different things are. And then they have one last thing to tie in to the credit card machine so that they could, those fees could be processed online.
Okay.
So we're hoping, I, I don't want to give you a timeline because I'm not the software people program and everything, but we're hoping as, as soon as possible, we have, we have waited an extremely long time, and I ask them for updates almost every two weeks in terms of where they are in the process.
Okay, so I think this process has been going on about two years, am I right?
I don't think it's been going on quite that long. I know that we started in earnest with them after receiving a company and, and you all proving to move forward with M G O. It's the same permitting software that is used in a lot of different jurisdictions, and I know we started that in earnest last fall.
Okay.
Maybe last, maybe last summer.
Well, I appreciate it, but you can give me a timeframe, I know you can't do it tonight, but.
I'll see if they can give us an update because that would be really helpful to us as well.
Yeah, because we paying them, right?
Oh, we, we haven't actually paid them much yet.
Yeah.
We've paid them a little bit initial fee, but we really don't have a lot of work product back from them just yet. They've, they made us do a lot of work in terms of outlining every step to our permitting process and who is responsible for each step and how those steps could vary depending on the type of development that's happening. The good news is, we've also been able to work in our occupational, our business licenses as well. So those are going to go online as well as our building permits, and we're also hoping that they will be able to take our cemetery records in addition. So we've, we've added on a little bit as we've gone through this process.
So in the process of adding on, will it cost the taxpayer any more money?
No, sir.
Okay.
What we quickly learned was that however many permits we have, it's not, it's not dependent on necessarily that. We were already within like a big bucket of you have to have this many permits and you get charged this amount. And so adding those extra things on is not going to be a lot more expensive to the taxpayers. It's actually going to help, I think, all of us because we'll have more convenience of being able to renew those licenses and do some of that other work online.
Okay, and give me a price too, how much we set aside on this here project.
I do not have that price.
No, no, you ain't got to do it now.
I'll give it to you tomorrow, first thing.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else have any questions on this item?
And just to be clear, this is not new fees that we are charging, we are not increasing our fees of the work that we perform to produce the applications and the cases. This is just passing on the Clerk of Court fees and the Daily Star advertising fees.
Can I get a motion?
Are they looking at any other fee, no, you're good, are they looking at any other fees on that sheet, like, for adjustments?
Yes.
Okay.
They're doing, so our city planner and our building official are doing like a pretty extensive comparison of fees across our region and to see what else is covered in those fees. We hope to have those to y'all at a later date, we're not ready to present those yet.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Public hearing will be scheduled for March twelfth, twenty twenty four.
Resolution number one.
A resolution, a resolution to designate Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, as Main Street Day in conjunction with Louisiana Main Street, celebrating the fortieth anniversary of Louisiana Main Street and Hammond's Main Street Program maintained by the Hammond Downtown Development District and Hammond Historic District, Michelle Kendall.
Good evening, council. So I have, I did send you all an email about this in advance, and I was able to meet with four out of five of you, Councilwoman Wells, we didn't have a chance to meet. But I wanted to make sure that you all were well informed about this, not only really great celebration that we have for our community, celebrating our fortieth year of our Main Street Program. Hammond actually was one of the first four communities in the state of Louisiana that led the charge to develop the state's program, Louisiana Main Street, that really has helped remodelize our downtown and now over forty other downtowns in the state of Louisiana. So we are working with the state program for Main Street Day, March nineteenth. We will be going to the Capitol that, that day to get recognition from the Senate and the House with a resolution both, in both of their chambers. And we hope that we'll, we'll be able to work with our state program to secure hopefully more funding and aid for our state program. That way, our local programs and other state programs can do more of the great work that we have seen in Hammond. So with this forty-year milestone, like I said, we, we do want to celebrate around this. So for this year, March nineteenth, we will be at the Capitol, like I said, but we're more than happy to look at March nineteenth as a date to build on that momentum moving forward. And, you know, we do have a lot to celebrate, having a thriving and active downtown over these past forty years. We can, we can recognize, we, oh, there's always room for improvement. So we really are hoping to bring the community together around this milestone, recognizing that Hammond looking like for the next forty years, you know, we, we do want to make sure our community is a part of that. And we'll be tying it into our events and marketing this year. And we have a lot of exciting things planned through all the committees that we've brought back this year, and really just want to invite everyone to celebrate this with us.
Anyone from the public have a question on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution number two.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Choctaw Construction Services for railroad tracks, track repairs in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, R F P two four dash two one, Lacy Landrum.
Attached on this is the full R F P that was sent out by the city with the repairs. And at the end of that R F P, you'll also see the inspection report that comes. These repairs were recommended through an inspection that came in January of twenty twenty four, and several of them were highlighted as needing attention soon. So an R F P went out to describe the work to be performed, and we received four bids. We are recommending to go into contract with a low bid of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars to Choctaw Construction Services. Are there any questions? This is within budget of the railroad repairs that are within your street department budget?
Ms. Lacy, the street right here going, I call it across town by the green elevator.
Mm-hmm.
Man, I crossed that track the other day, and I actually can't do the speed limit, I actually have to stop. That's how bad the track was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilman Wells, I was told that that was basically up to the railroad to take care of that. I've been acting about this since we've been in office. Actually, we did something with it when we first, in our first term, and they still haven't got to take care of whatever doing that. The impression I was being told over and over is with the railroad. So I, I have the same questions too because that area is, is terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a new friend at C N Railroad, she works out of the Memphis office, and she was here for a conference down in New Orleans, and I got to meet her. She has requested that if we have any kind of urgent complaints or requests, that we pass them along to her. And last time, I know we've had some transition between a gentleman who used to work with C N, he was the Public Works Director for many, many years, he has since retired, and there is a new one. So let me put that forward to her and see if she can help us move that.
Thank you.
Josh Fletcher, yeah, Josh, yeah. Yeah, he's in, he's in a little bit different branch, so, yeah. That's Josh Fletcher, and then Morris Evans, of course, too, so.
That's where I got my information from. Okay, um, thank you.
So we will use this as an urgent, right?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna email to, to my new friend in Memphis and see if she can help us move it.
All right, thank you.
Great. All right, okay. Any other questions or concerns on this particular item? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number three.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a change order totaling one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollars with Hendrick Construction, Inc., for rehabilitate runway eighteen thirty-six, city project two two four zero one at Hammond North Shore Regional Airport. F A A, which is funding ninety percent of the project cost, has approved the change order and greenlit work to proceed. D O T D, which is funding ten percent of the project cost, is processing the change order now, Lacy Landrum.
So the good news is that this is still within budget, and as Ms. Lisa just read, this has already gone through F A A and being approved by D O T D as we speak. This is a change order that's needed in the course of this business due to some materials that came out and some new ones that need to go in. Overall, on the last sheet that was attached, you'll notice that the first change order was a deduction of six hundred and twenty-one thousand. This is an addition of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, but again, we are still below the original contract price. The new revised contract price will be around five point, little over five point two million.
But it's definitely not costing the city any money, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the, that's the even better news.
Yes.
Anyone from the public on this particular item? Any other questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution supporting the submission of a revised application for four hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars to the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to purchase new turnout gear and gear washers for the Hammond Fire Department. And number two, supporting a cash, cash match of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars to come from the Hammond Fire Department's Milage Fund, Lacy Landrum.
So at your last meeting, you had approved for a grant application, this is an application only to go forward. This match is coming from the Hammond Fire Department's Milage Fund, which is specifically outlined to provide for costs towards equipment that is necessary for firefighting and safety. As we discussed at the last meeting, this will allow us to purchase seventy-four sets of turnout gear, that's the full gear that the guys wear when they go in, and lady. The application would also allow us to purchase four gear washers. That's a special washer used for that equipment that will actually extend the use of life of that equipment, and it will make sure that all the chemicals that can potentially come out of a fire that could be cancer-causing are removed from that equipment as well. So they got a last-minute cost estimate update, and unfortunately, it was more than what you had approved at the last meeting, and so that's why this is a revision. The cash match, again, is still coming from the Hammond Fire Milage, and it is about an eight thousand dollar increase in terms of the match.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this particular item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council? If not, pleasure the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number five.
A resolution ratifying quotes and awarding the contract for windows and facade renovation at the Levy Building, project one two three two eight. The stub window restoration in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, Lacy Landrum.
So this is a project that we have worked closely with the historic district on, the Levy Building is part of our historic district register, and so we have to be careful about how we go about doing work on that building. We still, as a city, go before the commission to receive permission to make changes to the building. And one of the things that they have recommended is, in general, this applies to most historic buildings as a whole, is to preserve and to conserve as much of the material as possible. So they don't want our buildings falling down, but they do want them keeping that historic look about them. And as much as we can restore, conserve the materials that are already in place and reuse those, the better. Stab window restorations is very equipped and has a lot of expertise in this area specifically with window renovations, which is important for this project. So we are recommending that we go with them in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred dollars. This is also within, the council had approved an overall budget of about a hundred thousand dollars, this is the first chunk of that project. This is the first chunk of that project, um, and it is lower than we actually anticipated. So, that's good news.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Resolution number six.
A resolution to authorize Benny's Place to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Didn't Plan, We Didn't Plan it Clothing Company, held on Saturday, April sixth, twenty-twenty-four, from ten AM to five PM. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two-hundred West Charles Street. Alec Griffith.
So, this is just a follow-up event to the last event I proposed and was approved for, uh, in January. It is essentially the same thing. Um, it's a little bit more focused on our local Hammond bands. We'll have three live, uh, music performances from just our local Hammond bands. There's, um, Phase Band, the Seymour's, and one more that we're still narrowing down, um, to have come on board. But on top of that, we're still going with, um, similar to last time. There's twenty-plus clothing and art vendors that will be in the park, as well as, uh, we're targeting Nola Mia Pizza again and the Boulevard, um, food truck. So, we'll have two food trucks in the area this time. And essentially, that is what the event is. Last time, it was just a small music and art festival. Uh, and we're kind of just following up with that to bring light to a lot of these smaller, um, individual brands, clothing brands, um, and, uh, food trucks and, uh, local Hammond bands.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council have any questions or concerns on this item?
I appreciate the, the time that you put on this, because I know last time, we had asked you to bump it down. And so, I didn't hear any, any feedback, uh, negative, um, on, on the event you had. So, um, thank you for doing a good job.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number seven.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's open container law to Benny's Place during the Planet in the Park event hosted by We Didn't Plan it Clothing Company, held on Saturday, April sixth, twenty-twenty-four, from ten AM to five PM. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two-hundred West Charles Street. Alec Griffith.
Uh, Benny's Place is who came on board and did it for us last time. So, we just want to kind of target them again and have them officially on, on the paper and everything to, uh, for the state to approve.
Anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concern from the council? Pleasure to the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report, Mayor.
Uh, Eddie Bonine in the Louisiana High School Athletic Association has been in Hammond since last week. Last week was the girls' soccer finals at Strawberry Stadium. This week is the girls' basketball finals at, uh, the stadium, uh, the basketball arena, uh, at Southeastern. So, it's been, uh, a good week last week, looking forward to another good week this week. They'll be finishing up Saturday and, uh, hopefully moving on to, I think, lacrosse next.
Any coun-
Lacrosse is not here, though. No, okay.
We're trying to get them.
Okay.
Any council reports?
Um, I had a couple. I wanted to ask about the I-55 lights on the interstate over there, um, on the west side of town in my district. There, all the poles on interstate are up, up there on interstate lights up top, but none of them, that whole section over there, none of them working. I've met with the state and they, they said that the city has the contract to maintain them. And so, what, is there something going on that?
We have a meeting with the state tomorrow.
Huh.
And we're gonna follow up with that as well.
Okay, because it's, it's pitch, but I've been there for a while like this. I just wanted to, brought it up in the past. I just wanted to make sure we kind of were working on that if we, you know, if it was a budget issue or, or what. But it's, it's really pitch black over that whole area, and they're out there, just none of them work. Uh, and then, uh, want to appreciate the, you know, the help over there in Lakewood area. Y'all helped clean up the, the city, got out there and addressed some issues over there in that, that little area of drainage and some culverts and all. Uh, um, wanted to ask about the light. The light got fixed, but I remember we've had this come up in the past, the yellow lights, like the dent, like the yellow, not the LED lights for the, uh, energy, uh, when they went out, the older style yellow ones. I, I remember we've been discussing it for a while to go back with the white LED bright light when they go out. And so, it went back in with a yellow one, which is, I'm glad to see, and they're happy the light's out there. But I just wanted to make sure, you know, I thought that was kind of discussing change on a policy. Like when they went out, you know, we went back with the bright LED light. So, I, I wanted to just check in on that, if we had to make that more official or, or what, or, or, um, what needed to happen, but they, they just replaced it with the yellow light. So, is there any, is there, is that anything missing on that? Or is it just a mistake? Not a mistake, but I mean, is there a message that needed to be put in prior or, or what?
We'll follow up.
Okay, okay, all right. And then, uh, let's see, uh, buggies, you know, Lincoln Park, we just got the shopping cart buggies. They got them picked up, but I, I don't know, we need to, I don't know what we can do with working with some kind of system in certain areas of the city. It just, we get a lot more shopping cart buggies than others. And, you know, it's like y'all pick them up and then they go right back out there. So, uh, you know, it's, it's an, it's an issue, and I don't know if it's, you know, something that we need to get together with these, the, the, the shopping centers with, with the, um, the owners of them, general managers or something to try to figure out a way that, you know, who to call for them to come get them. Or, or I know a lot of, lot of places, they're making them to wear the, the wheels, you know, the carts. They, they won't leave the premises because it'll, it'll lock the wheels at some, some system. So, I don't know if we need to look into that possibly, and, and, you know, I, I, I would hate to do that to, to them. But, but we need to, we have a problem in certain areas with the buggies just continuing getting in it. And, you know, and the city workers don't need to continue picking them up, but we can't leave them out there either. And so, it's just a continued issue over there.
The merchants are supposed to pick them up, but as you see, we ended up taking care of it for them for the most part.
Yeah, and, uh, let's see, then the demo cars, what's the update on, on as far as the tagging the cars? There's, I know, I know they started moving on, but there, there's an area in, uh, off of Gardner Street that has like, you know, talking about sixty, I mean, it's, it's a, it's an abundance of, of, of cars. And so, uh, I, I talked with Joey, he's been doing a great job over there, so, uh, can't complain. He's been doing really, really good, and, uh, he's been addressing a lot of issues. But I just kind of, that's going to be a lengthy process. So, I just kind of wanted to check to see if, if that was on y'all's, you know, radar to kind of have a game plan going into that, that area over there.
We'll have them, we'll have them double-check that area. I know that they have been moving cars out because I've been signing the, the checks.
Yes.
Go back to the towing company, so.
Absolutely, no, and, and he has been doing a good job with that. It's just this is a little more serious issue over there, and, uh.
We may do it in phases.
Yeah, yes, so, and, uh, that was it, the LED lights, that's one thing, the buggies and, and, uh, the demo, demo, yep. So, I'm, I'm good, uh, I'm good over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the street lights. So, I'm gonna need somebody to write this here down, because I want to make sure that I tell the people that I talked to the city administration and the councilman's secretary. So, they took the note, so if these lights don't get done, I know who to talk to. Mooney Avenue and Phoenix Square. Light is out. Mooney Avenue and Coleman Street, all these on the corner also. Street light is out on Washington Avenue and Green Street. And we got an old resident, Ms. Myrtle Cooks, they over there, and it's real dark. On, on Mary Alley. All those lights need to be checked on this street. On, uh, one-fourteen Mallon Street, that light is out also. That's it on the lights. Okay, on the north side of Coleman Street and JW Davis, the light company, I met with BJ. They got the tie-downs on the light poles. Uh, they, they installed new light poles, but all the tie-down is really a mess. I talked to DJ, what, three years ago after the, uh, the storm? And right now, Greenfield's in the process of doing a community guarding, and they're gonna have a lot of traffic over there. So, that definitely need to be fixed because it's really a hazard. Six-oh-five Washington Avenue. They got holes right in the certitude, which is in their yard. One-zero-zero-five Magnolia Street. They having sewer issues that's coming up in the shower and the bathtub pretty much every time it rain. One-oh-three-and-a-half White Street, they having sewer issues. And what they're doing, they actually taking their cleanout off in the back of their house every time it rain. Two-one-two White Street have a banded house and about to turn into a drug house. We call them crack houses in our community. On, on Carolina Street, we've been talking, well, Ms. Lacy, you and I have been talking about this a while, naming the street after Willie Grant, so.
I just heard back from nine-one-one, Ms. Vicki there. She said they don't have any problems with it. I think she's my last one to make approvals. So, we can send it over to Planning and Zoning Commission and move forward with that.
All right, thank you. And I want to thank the city and the light company for actually getting limbs cut in District Three. And I want to thank the administration for cutting them two trees in Mooney Park. Thank you. Yeah, that's a smile, you can smile on that one. Yeah, I know it's hard, but you can smile on that one. Thank you so much. Uh, we've been talking about this for the last two years, so thank you for actually getting those trees cut in Mooney Park. That's it for me, Kev, I got three more things, but, uh, I'll wait till the next meeting.
Any other reports? Lacy, I need, uh, follow-up on the striping of industrial and code enforcement to go and take care of a serious issue on Moran Street for me. There's a house there. Need serious attention to it. And it's, it's past demo, yeah, yeah.
Well, I got one more thing, because I don't want to leave out here without saying this. So, I want to thank the Wilberdane Field Committee for actually picking Mr. Dunn and Ms. Jocelyn Lee, which all those members of Greenfield Baptist Church. So, I want to recognize y'all myself, and I want to thank the committee for picking those two people. That's it, thank you.
Could I give them, if that being, uh, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned, in just a few moments, we'll start right into the Wilberdane Field Award. Just one moment.
Ms. Lisa, the secretary.
Yeah, I'll share with Steve. At least that's okay, I can get him.
Lisa, wait. She right the, just, I get one, huh, take this.
You keep yours, right? Yeah. Give her, I'm sorry.
All right. Good evening. At this time, we'll move right into our Wilberdale Dangerfield Award of Excellence. Uh, at this time, I'm going to call up Pastor Jarvis Crockingham of Revising Church. He will lead us in our opening prayer. He will lead us in our opening prayer.
I'm going to ask you by your heads at this time. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you and we bless you. It is in the name of Jesus we come seeking your presence and asking that you bless this ceremony. God, we ask that you bless the recipients, God, and we ask that you bless the presenters. And we ask, God, that the legacy of Mr. Wilbert Dangerfield will continue to move forward into our future for the work he has done here in our city. And we bless you for his family and the friends that rally around his legacy. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'll bring up our mayor, Pete Penapinto, for welcoming and recognition of any officials.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. This is always a great occasion for City Energy as always, and thank you and the committee for all the hard work that you've done. Enjoy the night and fellowship with friends and family tonight. We're blessed to have you all here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. At this time, we have opening remarks by Ms. Deidre Danielfield from the Dangerfield family.
I just want to thank the city and the Tanjbo Parish for still recognizing my dead. Last year I lost my mom, so now I'm gonna have to carry the load until keep going, continue, keep going. And I just want to thank you and I want to brother Dunn and sister uh Jocelyn, I don't know why my brain, my brain's gone, Sister Jocelyn. I want to congratulate for both of y'all. And I want to, the committed, I don't know who the committed is, but I would sure like to meet y'all. Whoever the committed is, I really like to meet the Wilbert Dangerfield Committee group. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. So um I will be reading the occasion. Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence. Whereas in nineteen twenty-six, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a preeminent historian and founder of the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, created Negro History Week to recognize the accomplishments of Negroes throughout the history of the United States. Whereas in nineteen seventy-six, the celebration of Negro History Week was expanded to include the entire month of February and become known as Black History Month, a federally recognized nationwide celebration that provides opportunity for all Americans to reflect on the significant roles that African Americans have played in the shaping of United States history. Whereas many African Americans have contributed to the development of the city of Hammond and their accomplishments impact our lives through their work in education, healthcare, business, and government. Whereas the Hammond City Council endeavors to enhance the council's relationship with the Tanjbo African American Heritage Museum, the Second Saturday Breakfast Organization, and the Martin Luther King Park Association. Whereas the city of Hammond desires to create an annual award to recognize individuals within the Hammond community, including Tanjbo Parish, who have positively impacted the lives of African Americans. Whereas the city of Hammond desires to recognize local, including Tanjbo Parish, African American, past and present, who have made significant accomplishments. Oh, my apologies. Oh, that's right. Excuse me. Uh who have made significant accomplishments that have positively positively impacted the city of Hammond. Now be it resolved that the city of Hammond will present each year during the second meeting in the month of February, the City of Hammond Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence to a deserving citizen or citizens who has made significant accomplishments that positively reflects on the city of Hammond or who represents through their actions and commitment the willingness to go the extra mile and make a positive impact in our communities in the city of Hammond. There shall be a committee of five members for the purpose of selecting the recipient or recipients of the City of Hammond Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence. The committee shall be made up of the following. The no, a nominee from the Tanjbo African American Museum, a nominee from the Tanjbo Parish Library, a nominee from the Martin Luther King Park Association, and two at-large members appointed by the council president. Each nominating group shall provide the full name and complete contact information of its nominee to the city council clerk. The term of the appointment shall be for one year. The city council president or his designee shall chair the selection committee. And now I ask Ryan Lawrence to come up and present our first honoree, Ms. Jocelyn Emlee.
Good evening, everyone. A born again believer of Jesus Christ, Jocelyn Lee is a native of Hammond, Louisiana. She's the only daughter born to the union of the late Clarence J. Lee and the late Evelyn Carter Lee. Jocelyn is the proud mother of two marvelous children, Evelyn Sierra and Vernon III. She was baptized at an early age by the re, by the late Reverend W. M. Mixon. And she is a lifelong member of Greenfield Missionary Baptist Church, currently pastored by the Reverend Dr. Jerry Hannibal. Jocelyn, affectionately known as Joy, was educated in the Tanjbo Parish school system. After high school, she pursued higher learning at the University of Wisconsin at Madison and Xavier University College of Pharmacy in New Orleans, Louisiana. Professionally, she has served as a registered pharmacist for over forty years, and she is currently serving as the pharmacy technician program director at North Shore Technical Community College. Along with the desire to pursue post-secondary education, Sister Jocelyn yearned for more spiritual education. She was blessed to pursue higher education at Union Baptist, excuse me, College and Theological Seminary, and she attained a Master of Divinity degree in Christian Education. Sister Lee serves in her local church, Greenfield Missionary Baptist Church, in various ministries. She serves as the second vice president of the third district Bogachita Senior Mission Auxiliary and has served as a national field missionary for Louisiana and the Senior Women's Ministry, Women's Union for National Baptist Convention of America Incorporated. Sister Lee volunteers and serves in several community organizations such as the Blood Center, the American Red Cross, the American Cancer Society, the Healthcare Coalition, the Patient and Family Advisory Council for N H S, N O H S, and the Apothica. She is a member of Louisiana Pharmacist Association, American Society of Health Systems Pharmacists, and Pharmacy Technician Educators Council. She serves on the Board of Commissioners for North Oaks Health System and the Board of Directors for the Tanjbo Hall Chamber of Commerce. Amongst her favorite scriptures are Jeremiah twenty-nine and eleven. For I know the plans that I have for you declares the Lord, plans for prosperity and not for disaster, to give you a future and a hope, in Romans eight and twenty-eight. And we know that God causes all things. To work together for the good to those who love God, to those who are called according to his purpose. Because of her faith, Sister Jocelyn Lee recognizes that the joy of the Lord is her strength, and she strives to live a life that is pleasing to God, encouraging and uplifting others walking in the good works that he has prepared for her beforehand. I present to you Ms. Jocelyn M. Lee. Hammond City Council, Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award of Excellence, presented to Jocelyn M. Lee for your individual achievements and your commitment to making a positive difference in the Hammond community through your selfless willingness to go the extra mile to improve the quality of life, especially in the African American community. An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity. Martin Luther King Jr., this day, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I am the voice who whisper low through nights, waves of escape over the hills under the moonlight. I am the voice of many who spoke of better ways for you and I. I am the voice of everyone who stood for what they believed in and refused to run. I am the voice that sung the hymn which gave so many hope to live. I am the voice who stated clear, I have worked too hard to sit in the rear. I am the voice who made it known that by the repulsed, the nineties were strong. I am the voice of the little girls who were burned alive while attending Sunday School. I am the voice of the young black man who endured unbearable pain for his whispers at praying. I am the voice that walked for days setting the trend that paved the way. I am the voice that shined the lights so that we all could see silver light. I am the voice that often would boom because I could ball better than you. I am the voice that extends to damnation who's because of my skin and his pigmentation. I am the voice, chin up, chest out, say it loud, I'm black and I'm proud. I am the voice that spoke to the mass, free at last, free at last. Thank God almighty, we're free at last. I am the voice of the number forty-four, the tangible sound of the voices. Before king of the jungle, hear me roar, hear my words, take heed indeed, break the silence and talk with me. Thank you. I just want to have one remark. Uh mine is a terrible anyway. As you guys, as you see, this is written by my son. Y'all please pray for my baby, okay? Thank you.
You can also find him busy at work around the church, working on HVAC systems or in the media. He has served as president of the Tanjbo Parish Council on Asian, State of Louisiana Area Agency on Asian, and the Louisiana Historical Archives Task Force for the Lieutenant's Government. He is a lifetime member of the DFW Post three six five two of Hammond, Louisiana. Jelmas is very active in several fraternal organizations. He was raised herded to the square in nineteen seventy-one at Oak Grove Lodge number one seventeen and past Worshipful Master of Oak Grove Lodge number one seventeen in Hammond. He is currently serving as worthy district patron for district number two, worthy patron of Evening Storm, O E S, chapter number forty-six in Hammond. He is also a member of the Royal Arch Mason and treasurer of the Hammond Chapter number fifty-five. He is a member of Constitution number one and past two thousand thirteen Dean of Holy Royal Arch Mason of New Orleans, Louisiana. He's a member of the Eureka Consistorory, number seven of Oregon, Platte Temple, number fifteen of New Orleans, and a member of the United Supreme Council Grand Inspection General of thirty-third degree Masons of Washington, D.C. It is my pleasure to present to you and introduce to others Mr. Jelmas A. Dunn Senior, the Wilbert Dangerfield Award of Excellence President for two thousand twenty-four. On the plaque read Hammond City Council, Wilbert L. Wilbert L. Dangerfield Award Excellence, presented to Jelmas A. Dunn Senior for your individual achievements and your commitment to making a positive difference in the Hammond community through your selfless willingness to go the extra mile to improve the quality of life, specifically in the African American community. On this day, January the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four.
I want to thank everyone that came out to celebrate today. I realize that there's been quite a few that come before me and look at, I'm here to say that they are left a legacy that ones that come after them used to challenge us because as you grow, things grow to get better instead of what. I want to thank my pastor, Reverend Dr. Jerry Anderson, and the whole Greenfield family, the, uh, the Greenfield support, our families support. I want to thank the committee. And I realize the fact that y'all have suffered a great task before me. This is something I have been, but I've been a person. I was just, uh, finally, uh, on the Greenland and men who have just selected for the Wilbert Dangerfield Award, I was beginning to, uh, begin going and hope there's the others to join me. God bless you to every one of you and continue to give you the best help and thanks Lord for these opportunities to do help and strength that I can provide you to do the things that I enjoy doing. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
The mic's not working. Yeah, it's stuck.
Okay. Uh, if I hear you, yes, alright. I want to thank Mr. Andrews for asking me to come and speak today. Uh, the speech I'm about to give, I actually gave it on Monday, Tuesday, uh, at celebration. So, may have a little adjustments in there, but the message is consistent. Um, again, it's an honor to have the children to bring words and courage as we culminate like issue months and also the life of Dr. King and many other influential individuals, such as the late Mr. Dangerfield and the awardees who are held today. Coming from humble beginnings, I would say that I've lived a pretty normal life, but I've also had my share obstacles to overcome. I lost my mother when I was twelve years old and was reared by my father and many other extended family members. It was through the support of each of them and numerous mentors I gained throughout the years that helped me to get to where I am today. They instilled in me that there was nothing more important than obtaining education and utilizing that to provide better opportunities for myself in the future. And that is why the theme of stay awake, don't sleep on your future is most important to speak on, considering what we are as a community, state, and nation currently. We are living in a time where education has become a constant policy and mandates that are being forced upon us in a manner which causes individuals who are not in the know to be lost in the wayside. We are facing times where the youth of our communities are struggling to see the importance of obtaining a quality education versus being focused on how many followers they have on these social media platforms, such as Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and even TikTok. We have become a society that has become so connected to false sense of reality and straight reflect on, that we have lost sight of what is truly important to us, and that is the community coming together as a whole to create a better world for us and the generations that come behind us to live in. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
We are living in a time where we have become divided as a community, where brothers and sisters are taking up arms against each other due to whatever differences they may have with each other, not being able to come to peaceful resolutions and understanding. Our schools have become a breeding ground for fights amongst our youth, with them also having major instances of disrespect to educators who are tasked with providing them with a quality education. When we have a generation of young people who are not aware and could care less about the sacrifices made by their ancestors to provide them with the opportunities they are currently afforded, that is a problem. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
While these scenarios may not be ideal in terms of what we are in our society, there are still opportunities to make a change in order to see progress in our communities in all aspects. When thinking about Dr. King and even the late Mr. Dangerfield, we should all be able to agree that they were men of vision that never lost sight of the possibilities that could be in terms of creating a better world for everyone, especially for the communities and inhabitants who are underrepresented and often look old. While preparing this speech, I wanted to be sure that I didn't recite not only what Dr. King and other influential African Americans stood for, but also what could be shared that would help us as a community to become more engaged in matters which will further our progress, enhance the meaning of living a productive life, and call to action the necessities for supporting the places where we live. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
As members of this community, we must begin to go back to the foundations that our ancestors leaned on in order to become united. We must get back in tune with God. We all know that the church was an integral part and provided for the local community. It was a safe haven that provided opportunities for members of the community to be on one accord and provide support to all. The one thing that we know is consistent in all things is God. And when our communities lose that connection to Him, it pushes us farther away from obtaining the progress that we so long for. So, if you are not connected to a church or have not been as involved as you should, I challenge you to start now. Go back to the place where you received those spiritual foundations and begin to invest in providing those same foundations for the younger generation. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
As a community, we have to become more familiar with the politics that govern the cities that we live in. Know who represents youth and figure out if they are truly making decisions based on what is better for the community as a whole and not just a small faction. Understand that we are living in a time where it is not uncommon to have representatives now that look like youth and share the same interests in making things better for the community that they are also a part of. So, make sure that you know and support those who are fighting for the development of the communities that you live in. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
Becoming actively involved in the local education system, partnering with the local schools. It could be the school that members of your family attend or even the schools that you attended. The youth needs to see that there are people that have come from similar circumstances and done it for the same community as them and are successful. We have to change the narrative with them as it relates to education and the opportunities it will present to them if they take advantage of what they are providing. They need to see themselves as youth so that they can know the value of working hard and the success that comes along with it. This will help them in not falling victim to the male influences that have taken over our communities. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
We need to put to rest the spirit of competitiveness amongst ourselves. There is room for everybody to win and be successful. Minimize the pride of the barrel mentality and using our experiences as resources as a way to move everyone upwards will strengthen the sense of community amongst ourselves and usher in a new season of revitalization and rebirth for the city of Hammond. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
To the young people listening that are here today, know that you are the future and we look to you to be the main influencers that can support the change we seek within our community. It was not long ago that I was your age attending events similar to this one, thinking that there would never come a time where I would be standing on this side of the podium, but here I am today. Never would I have imagined that I would have achieved all that I have at the young age of thirty-nine. Based on society's norms, I should be dead or locked up, but I stand before you today as a history maker. I don't say this to brag or boast, but to inspire those to see all that you can be and the possibilities that are endless in terms of what you are able to achieve, but you have to have a clear vision of what that will look like for you. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
Please tell that the things I'm speaking on today applies to me as well. While the path of speaking today was bestowed upon me, I'm not above being the same guidance and support that shared with you today. As I continue to reflect on today's message and the life and legacy of Dr. King, I reminded of this passage from his nineteen sixty-seven speech, "Beyond Vietnam, a time to break silence," and it reads, "Now let us begin. Now let us rededicate ourselves to the long and bitter but beautiful struggle for a new world. This is the calling of the sons of God and our brothers wait eagerly for our response. Shall we say the odds are too great? Shall we tell that the struggle is too hard? Will our message be that the forces of American might militate against their arrival as foreign men and we send our deepest regrets? Or will there be another message of longing, of hope, of solidarity with the yearning of commitment to their cause at whatever the cost? The choice is yours, and though we might prefer otherwise, we must choose in this crucial moment in human history." The future is bright for the city of Hammond and the communities that are represented in it. To see this future that we long for, we must choose to stay woke, as this allows us to never lose sight of what we are, but also what opportunities lie before us. Everybody say, "Stay woke."
Stay woke.
Thank you.
On behalf of the Hammond City Council, Dr. Khalid, I'd like to thank you guys for entrusting this program and sitting right here again.
You did a great job.
I'd like to thank everybody who was out there after the news to celebrate with those that were connected to receive the Wilbert Dangerfield Award this year. And I was sitting back reflecting, uh, throughout the program. It got me to think, you know, we still, the second council, we see since the first council, whatever set, still, all five are still together. And it makes me think about the time in which they set in the late seventies of the Vietnam. The hurdles that they had to cross, things that they had to do in order to bring our city to where it is right now. There's a song that they used to sing on this TV show called The Smoking Bank. And they say, "You got a long way to go and a short time to get there." We still have a long way to go and time is still winding down. But in order for that to happen, we have to put aside our differences. That's why we have to put aside our own personal agenda. And we have to come together to do what's a bit for the city of Hammond. I was talking to a guy yesterday and I made a comment to him, I say, "When I sit in my seat sometimes, I don't have my mind, and I made up on some of the things that I've always wanted." But I pray to God that he will do everything that I do. So, when I do make my vote, I can walk away with a head turn that I can go to the future knowing that I put the people of Hammond first and not him. Uh, that's what he prayed to God to do someday. But it's hard sometimes to follow behind the shoes of Mr. Dangerfield, serving in his, serving in his, in his business. Hard shoes to fill and it's tough shoes that I wouldn't even want to put on. And, uh, but I, I understood it quite, I understood where he was coming from because I, I had a, a good opportunity to follow him as a youngster growing up. Dangerfield was digging in my church. Because I grew up in the church that I came out of, I was able to see him in the city and to see him in church. Same thing. So, this city was far, danger man in church, he fought. But we got to continue to stick together. We have to continue to stick together because the forces that are out there right now, they're going to be our force. And we got to rise above them. Again, at this time, I'd like to thank each person that participated on the program tonight. Thank you again for coming out. You could have had business at the place, but I appreciate that you came out tonight to, to be with us on tonight. Again, I'd like to take a gratulation to our recipients of this year's award. I'd like for, uh, the remaining members that are here from the committee to stand tonight, please. The speaker is Mr. Khalid, and, uh, Mr. Thomas is not with us on tonight. Again, I thank you guys for your support and your, your work that you put in. And I, I received a comment, and I'm afraid I'm going to get out of the way. I'm sorry, I seem to have a little freak of a microphone. But a couple of years back, I received a comment about the for the Dangerfield Award. And I got offended when, when I got it, you know, I didn't respond. I thought about what I wanted to say. So, I always better know that he was uncommitted by the council to oversee the process. I have no doggone plan, and I made no lung making up anything. I just take this and make this feedback to me and that committee. I'm just glad tonight that we are here tonight to honor those that have done theirs, y'all, and theirs to use inland in the woods and make the citizens of Hammond and the city of Hammond of their. Glad for that. It comes from all of you, thank you all for being here and giving glory to this honor, giving praise, giving thanks. Thanks to you for preaching to that hill in the nineteenth century, asking for guidance, teaching the people, teaching the citizens of all of her home in Dangerfield, right now, for the benefit. You could see y'all, you were, you did y'all on all search. Thanks for the truth that's been passed through the nerves of our bodies. Thank you best hand that the faith is prepared, taking away all your tendencies. Therefore, we give y'all glory, all honor, and all praise that even though we leave this place, never leave the front. Ground breaks now, there we go, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Ground breaks, send back.